They're prompting me.
Are they?
Yeah.
In other words, sit down.
Trying to keep you on schedule.
Good conversation. I never want to do that.
I know, like we always do.
Yeah. All right. Welcome to the Bossier City Council Regular Meeting, Tuesday, March 16th, 2021. Have the invocation by Councilmember Scott Irwin and the Pledge of Allegiance by Councilmember.
She has not heard it done.
He's not? Councilmember Don Williams will say the Pledge of Allegiance.
Please bow your heads. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this beautiful spring day that you have given us. We thank you for all the blessings you've bestowed on our community. Lord, we thank you for the multiple successful vaccines against the COVID virus, and we pray for a quick end to the pandemic. We pray, Lord, for those who have lost loved ones, those who are sick, and those facing financial difficulties. We pray for the solution to the many issues that these people face. And, Lord, we pray for wisdom for our nation, our state, and for us in this council meeting today. In Jesus' name, amen.
Command.
Please face the flag. Repeat the pledge.
Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Mr. Montgomery?
Here.
Mr. Larkin?
Here.
Mr. Irwin?
Here.
Mr. Darby? Mr. Williams?
Here.
Mr. Free, absent. Mr. Harvey?
Here.
In accordance with Louisiana Revised Statute 4219 and the Attorney General's Open Meetings Guidance in Order to Meet Quorum Requirements, some Bossier City Council members may be involved in the meeting via telephone or video conference. If anyone is uncomfortable in coming to this meeting, they are welcome to call 318-549-4595 at this time for public comments on any agenda item in accordance with recently passed Act 302. You must state your name and address for the record, and you will be limited to three minutes for your comments. We will allow five for an item and five against an item in accordance with adopted city council meeting rules. Please remember that this is not a question-and-answer session and that you must speak clearly and slowly so that we can understand you. Please no foul language, or the call will be disconnected, and you will forfeit your right to speak. Mr. Montgomery, there's been no virtual public comments.
All right.
Minutes?
Hmm?
Minutes?
Yeah.
Okay, sorry.
I was just trying to get my paperwork organized.
Oh, okay. I'm so sorry.
Approve the minutes of March 2nd, 2021, regular council meeting in dispense with the reading.
Some move.
Second.
Questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote. No add-ons?
There's been no add-ons today.
We have a ceremonial presentation by Mayor Walker to the Bossier City Finance Department.
Council President, we need to approve the agenda.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I make a motion to approve today's agenda.
Sorry.
Second.
One minute. A formality.
Sorry.
Any questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote. Thank you, Phyllis.
I'd like all the members of the Department of Finance to step up here behind our department head. You know, counsel, both y'all and my administration have been said many, many times how fortunate we are to have the department heads that we do and all the staff that they have with them. Great bunch, and we'll be recognizing two of them today. And the first one I want to recognize is our fire department, correction, our finance department. The Government Finance Officers Association of the United States and Canada has awarded the Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting to the City of Bossier City for its Comprehensive Annual Financial Report for the Fiscal Year 2019. Very important is this is the 39th year they have received this award. That is outstanding, to say the least. This report is judged by an impartial panel to meet the highest standards of the program, which includes demonstrating a constructive spirit of full disclosure to clearly communicate its financial story and motivate potential users and user groups to read the report. The Certificate of Achievement is the highest form of recognition in the area of government accounting and financial reporting, and its attainment represents a significant accomplishment by government and its management. And we have three plaques documenting this. The first is to the City of Bossier City, and you can pick these all up in a minute, but that's your first one. And then the second goes to our financial department, and you'll get that one also. And the last one, ladies and gentlemen, is the person who makes it happen, our Director of Finance. He has absolutely done a superior job, and we're so fortunate to have her. Stacy, I want to present this to you and give you an opportunity to say anything you would like to say. The mic is there. Showtime. We'll be separate.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to say I've been a CPA for 35 years, and I have never worked with a group of finer people than my staff that I have here with the city. As the mayor said, this is the highest recognition that government or accounting can receive. And it's because of these ladies and gentlemen behind me and the ones who are directly in finance and those that are support staff. So I really just have to accommodate them and thank them for all they do for the city.
Get back to work.
Well, and if I may add, this is certainly validation that the City of Bossier reports clear, accurate, and timely financial information. So, for the record and for the public, thank you. Was that a good statement, Mr. Hall?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Excellent. Much shorter than I anticipated.
Yeah, well, you know, those pre-meetings help a little bit, so kind of tame my thoughts and words a bit. Glad to help. Unfinished business?
Adopted ordinance to reappropriate $250,000 from the sales tax capital improvement funds to the 2021 Streets and Drainage Repair Project. Final reading?
Some move.
Second.
Questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopted ordinance to appropriate $1,200,000 in surplus funds from ordinance 48 of 2019 and ordinance 147 of 2019 towards additional improvements at city recreation areas. Final reading?
Some move.
Some move.
Need a second.
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 Questions from the audience?
Hold on just a second. I had to change mine. Okay, there you go.
Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopted ordinance authorizing Mayor Lorenz Walker to execute the attached revised cooperative endeavor agreement between the City of Bossier City and the Veterans Affairs. Final reading?
Some move.
Second.
Questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Mr. Darby? Thank you. Motion carries. Adopted ordinance to fund the water line relocation at Green Acres Office Park in preparation for Walter Obigby Carriageway Phase II at a cost of $600,000 to come from the Water Capital Contingency Fund. Final reading?
Some move.
Second.
Questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopted ordinance authorizing the City of Bossier City, State of Louisiana, to proceed with not to exceed $50 million financing through the Louisiana Local Government Environmental Facilities and Community Development Authority for the purpose of refunding certain bonds of the authority and providing for other matters in connection therewith. Final reading?
Some move.
Second.
You know, I'll have Kent come up after number six is read because they're in conjunction with one another. So, any questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopted ordinance authorizing the issuance of not exceeding $130 million of taxable utilities revenue refunding bonds, Series 2021, of the City of Bossier City, State of Louisiana, in accordance with the terms of the General Bond Ordinance adopted on July 6, 2010, providing for sale of such bonds and providing for other matters in connection therewith. Final reading?
Some move.
Second.
All right. If could call on Mr. Kent Schnecksnider with Sisong. He is our municipal advisor. Welcome.
Thank you for having me, Mr. Chairman, members of the council administration. Thank you, guys, for actually adopting those two ordinances. That puts all the approvals in place with the exception of State Bond Commission, which we should receive next month. And we're proceeding along our timeline very nicely. We should receive, or we're going to the ratings probably next week, or probably receive the final ratings of the city at the end of March, beginning of April. And that puts the ratings in place for us to get the offering document out, to issue to investors, to sell the bonds. So we're hoping the market holds and gets a little bit better to provide the necessary savings to the city. Any questions?
Any questions? Questions from the audience? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries.
And for the record, this was the second reading of the refunding of roughly $180 million in the Utility Water and Sewer Enterprise Fund, which is over the life of the two, remaining life of the two issues, will save roughly $20 million back to the utility fund on behalf of the taxpayers. New business?
Introduce an ordinance appropriating $15,000 from the 2021 Hotel Motel Taxes Fund and payable to the Shreveport Bossier Sports Commission to help sponsor the Bayou Classic. First reading?
Mr. Chairman, we, and Jimmy, I was on the phone a while ago with someone, and we can't use Bayou Classic in this ordinance. It's got to be Port City Fest Weekend.
It's got to be what?
Well, Bayou Classic is a name only can be used just for the game itself.
I got you.
Yeah, so it's the Port City Fest Weekend.
Okay.
I'd like to make amendment to that ordinance.
Got it. I have a motion by Mr. Williams.
Need a second.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Do we just change it and then vote to adopt it?
But we're going to change it and then vote.
All right, we're going to vote to change it first. Any questions from the audience?
I might add, Mr. Harvey was backed on the phone when we was talking to the guy, just so everybody knows. It wasn't just me, it was Mr. Harvey, too.
Thank you, Mr. Harvey.
Welcome.
Counsel?
I do have a, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Looking at the ordinance, I do have a question. I kind of have an issue with it being in the ordinance. The paragraph whereas COVID-19 restrictions have had an impact on the entire event. We've not held this event here in the past. How do we, how do we know what?
Well, for one thing, at every one of these events, they had the bans. The bands are not allowed to come this time because of that, so it's had an impact. It's going to impact this one because that's one of the reasons we're contributing money, because it's got to overcome what impact there are. You know, one of the big attractions to this event are the bans from each school, and they're not allowed to come.
Yeah. If we hold this here again, are we saying that, that we'll need a reason like COVID to, to support giving them money again?
Absolutely not. It's just, it's just the fact this time that, you know, at this late hour for us to put up the money, there was, one of the reasons is they're not having the same activities that they were allowed to have in the past at this event when it was held elsewhere.
Yeah, I just, I do support this, and I support it without that statement, so.
Well, I can delete the statement. If y'all want to amend it to delete that, that's fine. It's just a fact of life that it is having an impact on the event. Without COVID, the bands would be here.
Does anybody else have any thoughts on that? I mean?
Well, there are restrictions, too, on a number of people that can go to, like, to the stadium.
Absolutely.
I think it's, was it, did it go to 50%?
Mm-hmm.
Because it was 25 for a while.
Seems like it makes sense the way it is. Not, not an issue with me having that language in there one way or another.
I'm fine with it.
Hello? So where are we? Do we have a motion and a second?
I have a motion.
Did you want to take over?
I have a motion by Mr. Williams, a second. I think for Harvey.
All right, so we have a motion and a second to revise the wording to Port City.
Fest Weekend.
Fest Weekend from Bayou Classic. Questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
It did. So, vote to Amanda's for you.
Yours didn't come up? Is your, are you a yay or a nay?
I'm a, I'm a yay. Oh, too late.
All right, I need a motion.
Motion carries. Introduce an ordinance appropriating $15,000 from the 2021 Hotel Motel Taxes Fund and payable to the Shreveport Bossier Sports Commission to help sponsor the Port City Fest Weekend. First reading?
Some move.
Second.
Any comments, Mr. Larkin?
So, I was just wondering, did we dispose of, I mean, did Tommy's?
I'm satisfied with, with the wording.
You're good with it?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah. That was all I was, my question. So, yes, I'm good.
We good to go now?
Perfect.
Thank you. Questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Introduce an ordinance authorizing the reclassification of the Accounting Division and the hiring of an accountant one, resulting in a net neutral change to the operating budget. First reading?
Some move.
Second.
Questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Introduce an ordinance to appropriate funds to cover construction costs for the Airline Water Tank Rehabilitation and Painting Project for a total of $1,885,000 to come from the Hotel Motel Tax Fund. First reading?
Some move.
Second.
All right, and for the record, this is the water tank located at Airline and Barksdale Boulevard, I believe, right next door to Ellis Pottery.
Mr. Montgomery, can you talk into your microphone just a little bit more? Mr. Darby can't hear you.
Can you hear me, Mr. Darby? All right, good. I've got the mi, mic in my mouth and.
Yes, sir. I can hear you.
All right, then. So, this is the water tank located next door to Ellis Pottery. And, and we have been, had a contractor out there, I believe, going inside and out. I don't see Mr. Roshn back, but I know, kind of give an update as to, you know, why this is taking a little bit longer and a little more costly than the other two.
This is the oldest water tank in Bossier's distribution system, and it looks okay on the outside. It has been overcoated, but it's been more years than we can determine since the inside and the outside have both been blasted down to bare metal, rehabilitated, and brought back up. So it's taken some time to make sure when we put this out the bid, there's no surprises to the contractor out there. And of course, over the years, I can't tell you how many communication components have been installed on top of the tank and everything else. So it's been a little bit of a logistical effort, but I think it's going to be money well spent. The tank's in, in great need of being rehabilitated there, so.
Do we have a rendition?
Yes, sir, we do. I don't have it on my person, but yes, sir, we do.
I was hoping we could, I didn't think about it, put it up on the, for the record.
I don't have it.
Just to let people know.
Does Mike have it? Is Mike here?
Here, but I don't have it on me.
What are you good for?
Man, this is a rough crowd today.
I mean, also, it's not just for the painting. It's somebody, we got reworked water piping inside, and we moved the pipe, then we on the outside it was overflow.
Yes, we've, we've done quite a bit of odds and ends out there. We extended the overflow. A lot of times, not a lot of times, when that tank overflows, we get the, you know, the tank is ruptured, and it, it was an older design, and they used to let you overflow at the top of the tank. We have to bring the pipe all the way down to the ground. It's just one of those things where it's, it's a complicated effort to do that tank right. And I think, I think it's the right decision to get that one done, so.
I was wondering if, Mike, if you could, I can't find it on my phone, but.
I just texted it to you and Jimmy.
I don't have it. He said he texted it to you, you and Jimmy.
Yeah, can I text it to you, or is that, is it going to be too hard to get it up on the screen?
Uh, you can email it to me, and I can get it up.
I thought you was playing a game on your phone.
I don't know how to play a game. All right, so what, save it?
Save it and then forward it to me?
It really is awesome.
That's somebody else's email.
Save. Shouldn't that go to Photos?
Yes, sir.
Two more, maybe it'll. It's really an awesome design. It's a little takeoff from the two previous tanks. We think we'll win the award again, so. Appreciate y'all's patience, but I think it'll be well worth it.
There's the top image.
It's awesome. Look at that. And again, we're sending the message, which was the original intent. The tank, because Mr. Roshn back, was to be rehabilitated, and instead of choosing our traditional painting pattern, we chose to salute and respect our first responders and our military. So once again, we make it clear who we're behind here at the City of Bossier. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
And Brian's here. If you could get that out to the media, all the outlets and so forth, we would greatly appreciate it, so. All right.
I have a motion by Mr. Larkin and a second by Mr. Williams.
All right. Any questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Introduce an ordinance amending ordinance 133 of 2019, increasing the appropriated amount by $1,5,300 from the Water Capital Contingency Fund to extend the nano filtration pilot study by six months. First reading?
Some move.
Second.
Questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries.
Excuse me just a second. Excuse me.
Introduce an ordinance amending the fines, fees, and costs for several criminal charges in Chapter 38 of the Bossier City Code of Ordinances. First reading?
Some move.
Second.
Any questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Introduce an ordinance to temporarily.
I'm going to need one minute, please.
Yes, sir.
Can we go on or what?
We can. Introduce an ordinance to temporarily reduce the management fees paid to ASM Global to manage the Brookshire Grocery Arena from April 2021 through June 2021, and to enter into a five-year contract between the City of Bossier City and ASM Global. First reading?
Some move.
Second.
Uh, any questions from the audience?
Thank you.
Yes, sir. On number six, please, please cast your vote.
I'm missing Mr. Irwin and Mr. Darby. Motion carries. Adopt a resolution of commendation and appreciation for the dedication and vision of Clay Bohannon and Louis Clark to create a world-class facility where children of all abilities can have the same experiences in their unique way. First and final reading?
Some move.
Second.
All right.
Mr. Montgomery, you want to finish the voting first?
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. You told me that. Got too much on my mind. Do we have?
Public comment.
Any questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Sorry. I'm sorry. Just making sure we, motion carries.
All right. We've got a special presentation, and the mayor's going to join. And Mr. Bull Coach and Louis.
Yes, sir.
I don't... Okay. And we have a video that goes along with it, too, if y'all want to watch it after it's over with, after this part's over with.
Okay, you want to do that, or you want to do it first?
It's up to how...
Let's do it first.
Okay.
(music)
First, let me, these are the people in addition to Coach and Louis, and of course, all the parks and recreation, um, of the committee members, the, the people of Bossier City that had everything to do with, uh, the manifestation and implementation of this. The goal for our department, this committee, was to ensure children of all ability levels had a place to play and interact, and to address opportunities for them to improve their physical, social, and emotional needs. Can you, Mr. Darby?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Just talk loud.
I forgot about that. Through, through play, the following individuals participated on our committee, and we certainly could not have had more qualified and diverse membership. Ms. Amy Gates, mother, Bossier resident, former Benton Elementary School principal. Gretchen Boggs, Bossier resident, retired Caddo Parish School Board Special Education Supervisor. Jean Strojan, Bossier resident, Bossier Parish School Board Adaptive Fiscal Education Teacher. Sherry Samuels, Bossier resident, retired Caddo Parish School Board 504 Specialist, School Counselor and Adaptive Fiscal Education Teacher. William Bill Samuels, Bossier resident, retired Caddo Bossier School Board Adaptive Physical Education Teacher, wheelchair sports coach, and related services facilitator for Caddo Parish Schools. Sherry Armadich, mother, Bossier resident. Patricia Pam Moore, Bossier resident, retired Bossier Parish School Board Special, Special Education Behavior Interventionalist. Cindy Baruli, Bossier resident, retired Bossier Parish School Board Special Education Supervisor. Jessica Jessie Dua's, mother, Bossier resident. Riley Dua, student, Bossier resident. And Mayor, if you'd like to read the resolution?
I'd be honored to do so, Mr. President. It's Resolution Number 18 of 2021, a resolution of commendation and appreciation for the dedication and vision of Clay Bohannon and Louis Cook to create a world-class facility where children of all abilities can have the same experiences in their unique way. Whereas BCI Burke, the oldest and most respected playground manufacturers in the United States, announced Field of Dreams in Bossier City as the Playground of the Year 2020. Outstanding. Whereas from the vast number of new playgrounds that were installed using Burke's equipment, Field of Dreams was chosen as the most amazing new place, space in 2020. And whereas, the design and equipment for Field of Dreams was a group effort and called on everyone, from special educators to people with differing abilities and their family members, to provide their experiences and help shape this environment into the largest, most inclusive playscape in Louisiana. And whereas a fully remped structure and unitary servicing brings everyone into the heart of play and creates equity where children of all abilities can have the same experiences in their own unique way. And whereas Clay Bohannon and Louis Cook dared to dream of an all-inclusive playground for children of different abilities, to have an amazing experience, and further create newly, fully accessible bathrooms that includes junior-sized toilets. Now therefore, be resolved by the City Council of the City of Bossier City and regular session convened, that Clay Bohannon and Louis Cook are hereby commended for their vision and tenacity in creating this amazing, all-inclusive playground, Field of Dreams. Above and foregoing resolution, what read and full in legal session convened on the motion of...
Uh, that was a motion of...
We're gonna fill that in, yes.
We'll fill it in.
To be completed.
Mr. Williams and, uh, second by Timothy Larkin.
All right. And may I add that, um, to the mic real quick, that once again, Bossier City shines across the United States of America as one of the number-one places to live, retire, and raise a family regardless of who and where you are. So my hats is off, my hat is off to everyone, and amen, and may God bless Bossier City, and may God bless the United States of America.
Amen. Goodness.
Short people down front.
I would like to just say a couple of quick things. Number one, obviously, this award wouldn't have taken place if we didn't have the support of the mayor, the council, the Bossier City residents, and specifically, the evaluation committee members that spent hours of time, many with me, but mostly on their own, perusing the projects and submittals that the other companies submitted, and in the hopes of being able to acquire this project. I also want to thank Mr. Bohannon with his leadership and vision. It's very rarely that you work for somebody that you really gel with, and for the past seven years, he and I have G-hawed on a regular basis, and we get along really well, and we have pretty much the same thoughts and ideas, since we're both educators, and that's been a tremendous experience. This park is located at 4716 Hazel Jones Road, and we're doing some other things at some of the other parks, and we're having to redirect people who have never heard of the park to that park, and it's been such a wonderful experience for those parents and grandparents, especially during spring break, to take advantage of this unique opportunity that this city has afforded our department. So even though it has our names on the res- on the resolution, it's, it is a city award. You can't believe the excitement that our department has since we were named the 2020 Playground of the Year for Burke. Burke is a large playground manufacturer, and it, and it's really exciting news for the city and for all of us. So we commend all of you, and we thank all of you, and again, it's through Mr. Bohannon's leadership and directives that we do the things that we do and get accomplished that we do. One thing that he has said since I've been here, his motto is, "We make it happen." Well, at Field of Dreams, we made it happen, and hopefully, we can carry that on to other parks as well.
Thank you.
Just want to add one more quick word. I stopped by one day. I wasn't scheduled to be there, I just happened to pop in and wanted to see progress, and these two gentlemen weren't just coming up and having us go out and have other people do it, they were, been overworking, sweating, putting blood, sweat, and tears into it. So again, just a super outstanding job, gentlemen.
Thanks, sir.
Adopt a resolution to approve report of reconciliation for the Melrose Avenue and Plantation Drive Utility Extension Project, ordinance 71 of 2019, with a decrease in project cost of $860,000, first and final reading.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions in the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopt a resolution to approve report of reconciliation for the Shed at Metta View Project, ordinance number 134 of 2020, with a decrease in project cost of $629.42, first and final reading.
So moved.
Second.
Questions in the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopt a resolution authorizing the hiring of a utility worker for wastewater treatment plant in public utilities, first and final reading.
So moved. Second.
Questions in the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Under reports, we have Stacy Fernandez, the City Finance Director, with the monthly financial report.
Counsel, I've distributed the financials for February 2021. On page one, we have a revenue by fund. We're at 118% to budget. The part, portion of sales tax related to the general fund is at 110%. Page two are expenses by fund, and we're at 82%. Page three are our sales taxes. In year-to-date, we are 4.5% above prior year, which is pre-COVID, so very good.
Which validates last month's statement.
Yes, sir. Page four is our manning report. We're at 664 employees, we have a budget of 690, so we're looking for 26 people. Uh, compared to last month, 662, we're up two employees. Finally, on page five is our water and sewer report. For the month, we're at 94%, year-to-date, 39%, budget year-to-date, 42%, enrolling 12 months at 95%. Doesn't look quite as good as last month, but part of that has to do with year-end booking liabilities and things like that. So I think, once we get a good quarter under us, we'll have better numbers. Do you have any questions?
Well, I just had a comment to make, once again, for the record and in the public, those that are here and those that are watching, and those that may be listening, and those who may talk with one another. This is our monthly financial report, which is the heartbeat of our city financially, and we just won for the 39th year in a row, um, the, the finance, the highest financial reporting award available to a municipality, and I would invite anyone, um, Phyllis can provide the copy of this, uh, is going back as far as when we instituted it, I believe it was 2011.
I made changes, so...
Yeah, I mean, we constantly are evolving and making it more clear and better and so forth, but, um, we're proud of this. It's done monthly so that we keep our finger on the pulse of the city and able to, we're able to act and react accordingly to ensure that this city's financial status and stability is always top-notch.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. We'll say it, Mr. Montgomery.
Thank you.
Mr. Ben Roshnback, City Engineer, Monthly Project Report.
Good afternoon, counsel. Uh, before I get started, I would like to say that I, I hold in my hands the Army Corps permit for the Walter O. Bigby Carriage Way Phase Two. Thank you, Mr. Larkin, I'm gonna give these to you. He was a tremendous help in getting that across the finish line. So you're gonna notice here, um, ongoing design and construction projects are kind of downticking a little bit. We've got a couple of big projects complete. Uh, currently, we've got $74 million under construction with nine projects in design, um, and seven subdivisions engineering the construction phase. Uh, Walter O. Bigby Carriage Way Phase One, uh, is substantially complete. Um, we're looking to provide a report of reconciliation with final quantities on April 6th, still working through some punchless items and, uh, counting items on that, but, uh, proud to see that one in a rear-view mirror, and we did the groundbreaking for Phase Two, um, last week. Swan Lake Road, uh, you can see now they are focused on the inside lanes there going underneath I-220. Uh, a few days behind there, expect them to pick up, they ran into some pretty poor subsurface soils out there, um, but, uh, I'm hearing they're, they're placing concrete as we speak, so they're, they're doing their best to make hay when the sun is shining, and we appreciate that. Uh, Melrose Drive Extension, uh, a lot of work going on out there with the subsurface drainage and others. Um, they're right on schedule with that project. Coleman Street, if you haven't been out there, they are blowing and going. Um, this is, uh, what I would consider towards the west end of the project out there. Uh, the Highway 71 Street Skate Project, Phase One, um, they're way ahead of schedule on that project, about 67% complete, 12% of the time has elapsed. Um, in my opinion, it's looking great out there. Uh, the Bossier City Fire Department burned building, um, this 28 days behind really doesn't tell the story, they, they're basically complete, we just haven't had a, a pay app come in in, in quite some time. I know the fire chief, uh, uh, Mr. Zagone, has been working with the contractor on a few little, uh, punchless items out there, but that's just about done. Animal Control Facility is another project that is substantially complete. Uh, we're currently working with them to reconcile that project and get that one, um, off our ledger as well. Looks really good, if you haven't been over there and been inside, it's, it's an impressive facility. Tinsley Athletic Ball Fields, uh, just plagued by bad weather. Uh, they, there you can see they're coming up with the major concessions building there, um, lots of activity out there, but it, it, uh, the weather continues to be a, a problem. Public Service Commission Lighting Projects, uh, we closed out the, um, Public Works Building and the Police, uh, Building. Uh, right now, we have the Brookshires Grocery Arena working on, um, a, what we'll call an amendment to their contract, and they're way ahead of schedule on, on that. Looks very good. Field of Dreams restroom, uh, that one is open to the public, we handed keys over to, uh, Building and Grounds last week. Citywide Street Improvement Project, we expect to have the next phase, um, ready for bid in the next two weeks. We opened bids on Phases One, a couple phases anyway, um, in the past couple of weeks, been working with the contractors, getting all the documents formalized on that. Uh, we're anxious to see, um, some real work progress on this project. And then private development, um, I won't go into the detail there, but there is a lot of private development going on right now. Projects out to bid are in design, the 71 lighting, Highway 71 lighting project, we met with the design team, uh, last week, finished up comments there, uh, so we're just about ready to get that one out to bid. East Bank Fire Station, the design is underway. ready to get that one out to bid. Um, East Bank Fire Station, the design is underway. Clifford Almond Park restroom, that was part of that 1.2 million that was approved today. The design on that is actually complete, so we will be going out for bids on that very soon. Um, we've got the South Bossier Miscellaneous Capital Improvement Projects, those are in design, and then the Highway 71 left-turn lane at Golden Meadows Subdivision, uh, we're in the stages of traffic study and, and design on that project. Honorable mention, uh, we will be setting a meeting to review, uh, the traffic study that Urban Systems is working on next week. Uh, they have compiled a bunch of data for us to take a look at, and we'll be moving into the next phase of that project, which will be implementing recommendations from, from, from their efforts.
Mr. Rochenbach, could we go back in time, since I'm a man of history, regarding the urban systems and the initiation of that process roughly six months ago, I believe? If I'm, is, am I correct?
That's correct. Yes, sir.
So, and explain to everyone here, and the audience, and the public, and those that may converse with one another about this meeting, exactly what is that going to do?
So the effort is to, um, the, 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 the main intent of the study is to coordinate signaling on the major thoroughfares in Bossier City, which is Highway Three or Benton Road, Airline, and Highway 71 South. Highway 71 South has not been studied in quite some time, um, so we've taken a look at the available data that we had on all three of those corridors. We're comparing that with the current data in those three corridors, and then looking to make signal improvements, um, as you're traveling north and south in Bossier City on all three of those thoroughfares. And that was commissioned by this council, um, to really support what DOTD is doing. Uh, those are all three DOTD highways, um, but if anybody has traveled on any of those roads for any period of time, you know that the signaling lacks, uh, you know, it leaves a little to be desired. Um, so the intent of this study and work is to improve that effort.
Right, which commissioned six months ago in cooperation with DOTD, which took time for that coordination effort, also the fact of COVID, and the fact that DOTD would not allow, uh, any type of stra- traffic studies to be done, so we've certainly been through a lot in the past year, and as expediti- as expeditiously as possible, we have commissioned this study, and it's ongoing and has been ongoing.
Correct.
Thank you.
And there's a, yes, sir, and there's a lot of data that has to be collected at all, all of the various intersections being studied by this report.
Thank you.
Any other questions on that?
Ben, I, I, just my observation is, when you look at traffic on the airline around 2:20, there's a lot of intersections, and there's, there's a lot of traffic, but it seems to be a signaling problem. So am I right that this is an attempt to smooth out the synchronization of the lights through airline, through that?
The primary function of this study is to look at the signaling and what improvements we can do on the timing of those signaling, the sequencing, and, and things like that.
And move that traffic.
Yes. You know, some would-
Benton is, is the same, not quite as bad as-
Benton, um, you know, it just depends on who you talk to. Uh, but yeah, both of those corridors are, uh, they're stressed. There's a lot of, there's a lot of movement, um, both north and south in Bossier City. It's good problems, you know, you, you know, some cities would like to have as much traffic as we have on our roads, but I think we could do a better job getting folks, you know, saddle to north and north to south. Okay, um, property standards, uh, constantly out, responding to numerous complaints. I'd like to thank Councilman Williams. He gets very involved in that and helps mediate some of these very personal issues, uh, when it comes to private property, and we very much appreciate that. Tire removal efforts are underway. Any other questions?
Ben, you think school's gonna be out before they even get done with the, the drainage on Coleman? It's gonna be closing, isn't it?
It's gonna be close. I mean, they're moving. Uh, you know, I got a report. We're supposed to have a bunch of, you know, uh, hellacious weather over the weekend. That, I just, it's hard for me to tell, um, but we're, we're expecting some pretty good weather, uh, coming in this week as well. So, you know, anytime they're digging in the ground, that just messes everything up, and we have had some weather.
I mean, they, they moved, you know, the first-
They aren't wasting any time. Yeah, they're, they're, they're moving out there. I was watching the other day, they had four backhoes in a, in an area as big as this desk here, so they're, whatever they can do, they're doing it.
Yeah.
Thank you, sir. Again, I'd like to thank two people, um, especially Councilman Larkin, um, the amount of work that he's done behind the scenes and to facilitate this permit process, and uh, I can't even begin to tell you the difficulty of navigating between the Corps of Engineers, DOTD, and Levy Board, and Mr. Larkin was able to bring those three organizations together. And, uh, yesterday at his office, had all of these permits delivered in his required neat fashion, all stapled together and ready to go, and then he had them to the mayor this morning to sign. So, uh, we want that not to go unnoticed, and certainly, we appreciate your valiant and diligent effort in that process, or we wouldn't, would not be here today celebrating. So, thank you. Also, again, I'd like to thank Public Service Commissioner Foster Campbell for his efforts in obtaining the funding, uh, for all of the LED lights that we've put from the arena throughout the city here in Bossier. So thank you again, Commissioner Campbell. Any other business? Everyone have a great week, and remember to go vote Saturday. Have a great week. Meeting adjourned.